Good evening. This is a regular city commission meeting for the City of Largo for Tuesday, March 2, 2021. You may be able to tell that I'm not actually at City Hall. Mr. Penner and myself will be joining the vote lead today. And so I'm going to pass the down law to Vice Mayor Robinson, who is in the day or in the commission chambers to run the meeting. Vice Mayor Robinson, thank you.
So please make sure everybody that you have your phones turned off so we don't have any interruptions. First up on the agenda tonight is the invocation with Mayor, or excuse me, I'm going to give you a break.
There is.
With maybe a demotion with Pastor John Wickstrom from Oak Ridge Wesleyan Church. And then please stay standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Mayor Brown, Vice Mayor Robinson, commissioners, friends and neighbors, those joining online and in person, thanks for the opportunity to be with you and offer the invocation this evening. I invite you to join me in a word of prayer. God our Father, we invite your presence into this room tonight. We acknowledge with humility that the discussions and decisions that are made tonight have an impact on the lives of numerous people throughout our city and beyond. It is an honor and a privilege that you have entrusted a measure of your authority to this group of men and women as they seek to exercise their leadership in service to our community. I ask that you grant them wisdom, direct their thoughts, their words, their decisions, and their actions towards the best paths, reveal potential problems, and show them the best solutions. Grant them compassion, help them to act with character and conviction, to listen and to understand, to see the humanity and dignity of each person in our community, and to treat each with the reverence your creation deserves. I ask that you grant them a spirit of unity. Even in matters where there may be disagreement or debate, give this team the ability to work together combining great ideas for the good of our city. May a spirit of camaraderie be here tonight. And finally, Lord, I humbly ask for your blessings. I ask that you bless each one of these men and women gathered here tonight. Bless their families, their homes, and their lives. Leadership is often a daunting and lonely position. Give them strength and courage to lead and fill them again as they pour themselves out to serve our city. We ask also for your blessing and favor to be upon our city, its families, its neighborhoods, its schools, its businesses, and its people. Be near to us as you have invited us to draw nearer to you. I ask all of this in the powerful name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Next up on the agenda, we have a couple of proclamations. First up is the Women's History Month proclamation.
Whereas during Women's History Month, the City of Largo recognizes and celebrates the countless women that have contributed to the growth and development of Largo, individual communities, the broader region, and our world. And whereas women comprise 53% of the City of Largo's population, representing over half of our community and a diversity of cultures, heritage, and identities. And whereas women have demonstrated a profound and unwavering commitment to the economic, social, and environmental growth of our community, and have achieved exceptional success in all aspects of society, including science, education, healthcare, business, politics, and the arts. And whereas women have significantly shaped our national character in advancement of human and civil rights for women and all Americans, and have often led efforts that protect the most vulnerable and marginalized communities among us. And whereas women have worked to overcome many challenges, often in the face of discrimination and prejudice, and have persevered to encourage and advance the value and strength of all women to be successful and respected. Now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the City of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2021 as Women's History Month in the City of Largo, and as a dedicated month to reflect on the contributions of women to United States history.
Good evening and happy Women's History Month. I am Eileen Carey, the Community Engagement Specialist for the City of Largo. This month, we honor and recognize the history and legacy of remarkable women in our city, community, country, and world. Throughout the month, we'll be posting resources on our social media pages highlighting specific women and their contributions. Tonight, I have the privilege of introducing our honoree for Women's History Month, Major Anne Starling. Major Starling holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Florida, and in 2019 earned her master's degree from the University of South Florida. Major Starling began her career at the Largo Police Department in 2004, and has served in several capacities in her 16 years. She has held the title of Field Training Officer, Crime Scene Investigator, Honor Guard Member, Traffic Homicide Investigator, Driving Instructor, and Defensive Tactics Instructor before promoting to supervise the Patrol Squad and the Traffic Safety Team. Her career path then took her to serve as the Lieutenant for the Patrol Division, and was honored to be named the first female Assistant TAC Commander for the department, and the first woman major in the police department. It's my honor to invite Major Starling to share words with you this evening.
I just want to say thank you to everybody who allowed me to be here to do this mission, the administration. It's very important to recognize that we work for a city who honors these kinds of things and allows for women empowering women, which I think is very important. So thank you very much.
I want to present Anne with the proclamation here so she can keep it and remember forever.
Always.
Always. My wife will tell you to. Next up, we have a proclamation of March as Playing Unplugged Month.
Whereas prior to COVID, when much schoolwork became virtual, the average 11-year-old was spending nine hours per day in front of a screen. And whereas family members, both adult and youth, are spending less time interacting with each other and more time plugged into various devices. And whereas the American Academy of Pediatrics supports reducing screen time for all children in favor of increasing physical activity. And whereas the negative effects of screen time for both children and adults results in a sedentary lifestyle closely linked to heart disease and obesity, as well as depression. And whereas unplugging and engaging in creative, active, and outdoor activity promotes family bonding, increases energy, and refreshes the body and mind. Now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the City of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2021 Playing Unplugged Month in the City of Largo, and encourage all of our residents to unplug, get out to our parks, recreation facilities, and library to participate in the planned Playing Unplugged activities throughout our city.
It has been almost one year exactly when we had our last event before COVID, and everything shut down. Our last event was Playing Unplugged, where we encourage families to unplug from technology, come out to Largo Central Park, and unplug for one day. Unplugging from technology is even more crucial today, as so many adults and children are working from home and on classes virtually. We encourage the entire month of March for everyone to unplug and play outside in one of our many locations we have available. Our city has amazing parks to explore and play at, we have a golf course to work on your putting or your driving skills, we are fortunate to offer adult and children programs at our three recreation centers, performances at our exquisite theater, and a beautiful library to check out the newest book release. Adults and children, when you play, you engage in the creative side of your brain and quiet the psychological barrier that censors your thoughts and ideas. Pledge to Play Unplug with us this month, and you can enter to win great prizes. Please visit the website at www/playlargo.com/unplugged for the pledge form and other ideas on how you can unplug. Rediscover the joy of unplugging and playing today. Thank you.
And a couple of us just had the opportunity to do the ribbon cutting for the new playground at, over at Highland Rec across the street. And I think everybody on this side of the dais here slid down a couple of slides, so I'm sure there'll be some pictures on social media soon. So make sure you guys are checking that out. But it's a great, great opportunity, and thank you very much for everything that you guys have done over the past year in particular. Next, before we go to citizens' comment, we need to get consensus to allow the mayor and commissioner finger to attend the meeting virtually.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we will have citizens' comment. Is there any cards for citizens' comment?
Yes, I have several cards and some emails. First card is Amy Wodovitch.
I'm Amy Wodovitch, and I've been a member of the WFLA dive team for 10 years and will be continuing my diving career at Harvard University this fall. The tower has been absolutely pivotal to my success as a diver. Not only has platform diving opened doors for me to compete and final in 13 national championships, most importantly, it has taught me how to overcome mental blocks, conquer fears, gain confidence, and set goals. These are life lessons that I will remember for the rest of my life, and I believe that the platform should be reopened since kids in the greater Tampa Bay and Largo community should also have the same opportunity to experience life-changing moments on the tower.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Steve Wodovitch.
Hi, my name is Steve Wodovitch. It is a pleasure to return to the Largo Commission Chambers. My daughter and I were last here in 2014 when the city congratulated our dive team for running a successful USA diving national championship, and honoring three of our divers who placed in the top three at that national championship. Since then, we've actually hosted four large meets, including three national qualifiers, two of which use the tower. And these meets have had a tremendous impact, an economic impact, on Largo restaurants and hotels. They involved more than 100 divers and probably 500 to 600 family. Our team has also placed in the top 10 at national events dozens of times, won five national championships, and has won five of the eight female state championships, the high school championships, over the past two years. One of the divers was also featured in the Tampa Tribune Sports section on the front page, diving off the tower while she prepared for a national championship. And all of our competitive high school divers continue as collegiate divers, and this year their graduating class is going to TCU, University of Florida, Georgia Southern, and Harvard. The one other important thing too is a local person that trains with us also placed fourth in the world at the Budapest High Diving World Championships. So that's a, that's a big deal, since she kind of trains with us quite frequently. Today, we are here to talk about the tower and our team. And I wanted to explain, having a fixed platform is one of the most fundamental tools for a dive team. Because one of the fundamental skills is to enter the water cleanly. They have to be horizontal and rip the water. It's very important. And the reason why the tower is most important is because it's a fixed setting that doesn't flex and move like the dive board, and you can just focus on that entry and get it right. It kind of reduces it and makes it easy. It's fundamental to our success and our U.S. Olympic competitiveness. Most years prior to the pandemic, the City of Largo also used money collected from visiting college teams to heat the Southwest Pool. And our beautiful facility, the pool, the springboards, and the tower are all part of that which attracts all these college teams. We're the only pool in the entire west coast of Florida offering a complete facility right now. In fact, it, right now, at this very moment, it's the only recreational pool that is, there's only one other recreational pool in the state of Florida that has an operating tower right now. So it's a valuable asset as, that's important to maintain. I'd like to note that we haven't had any injuries on our tower for 30 years of training at the Northwest Pool. And as we come out of the pandemic, it's crucial to maintain our facilities. Our children have lost so much during the pandemic, and I don't want the tower to be another casualty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Nicola Ventura.
So my name is Nicole, my son is here, Evan Rockefeller, and I just wanted to give you a direct idea of what, what these children do for dedication. He has been diving for three years. He's currently ranked 11th in the nation, only after three years, by diving here at this pool. These kids actually dive between two to three hours, six out of seven days a week. Plus, we drive from Pasco County, so we drive an additional two hours a day just to dive at this pool. When he found out the pool was being, or the tower was being shut down, his first question was, well, what, what can we do? The nearest tower is in Coral Springs. I said, the other option is to move to Coral Springs. If we're going to commit that many hours to that kind of a tower, that's what we're trying to do. You can see one of our children are going to Harvard. He's trying to get into the military academy. This gives him an upper edge, and so it's very important. I guess my question is, as parents, we invest a large amount into our children's for their future. I'm just asking you to understand what kind of an investment these kids are putting forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Charles Rockefeller.
Hi, my name is Charles Rockefeller. The tower is a symbol of overcoming obstacles. Ever since I started diving, diving has always been about conquering fear. When I first stepped onto the tower and walked up the stairs, up to the 10-meter platform, I looked down and walked right back down. It's like being able to use the tower over and over to conquer this fear. A second point, costs. According to real estate agents Hank and Sheila Sworance, and my friends, it will likely cost more money to tear down the tower than to fix it. College. I'm a junior in high school, and diving is my best way to get to the military academies. The thing that makes me unique from other, from other divers competing to get into college is my experience on the platform. I'm trying to get into the Naval Academy, West Point, and Air Force Academy. All three of these academies have a platform, and the fact that I have experience on tower already gives me the upper hand. Diving on a platform for one of the academies has been my dream ever since I started diving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Francine Deemer.
I'm Francine Deemer. I'm Director of Major Gifts for Boys and Girls Club of the Sun Coast, and forgive me, but I'm going to dive off to another topic. I'm sorry, I couldn't help it. One of my sons, my son was on a swim team in Bradenton, and I know how important swimming is, and also how important youth services are. I just want to take a moment to thank you all very much. You all proclaimed this week as Boys and Girls Clubs Week in Largo. We really appreciate it very much. We serve 11,000 youth every year with after-school and summer programs. We invite all of you all to come visit us when you feel safe and like to. Our clubs are open for business, and you're welcome to come. This week, we have a week of activities for Boys and Girls Club Week, and we culminate Saturday night with our first virtual gala that is called, it's called Great Futures Reimagined, and it's a virtual gala. We're going to have a live auction and some fun things. Invite you to tune in. You just go to our website, www.bgc-sun.org. And if you're riding around town one night this week, we will have the pier, Tropicana Field, and also the Skyway Bridge are going to be lit up blue. So thank you all very much. We'd love to have you out to the clubs, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Walker, and I'm an attorney in St. Petersburg, but Jermaine, to this conversation, I am the past president of, or a past president of USA Diving, and I've also been as vice president of Junior Diving, which is a developmental end of diving. I've served as general counsel for US Diving. I've also been a national certified, as well as an international judge for the United States. I've judged in countries of really almost all, all over the world. And what is also important is I'm the chairman of the United States Diving Foundation and a member of the Rude Foundation. These two entities provide money to people for diving. We provide a lot of our money to USA Diving, but we also provide money for, for people who need it in the sport of diving, including local clubs. Jermaine, to this, Jermaine, what is important here is this, you have, what you have coming up is a decision between the amount of money to spend fixing a tower and the usefulness and benefit to the City of Largo for that cargo, for that, for the tower. That's the balance you're going to need to make. In order to make that balance, you're going to need several things I suggest to you, and one of them is accurate information. Because I've read the engineer's report, and I, I understand what is there. I understand the tower itself is sound, the handrails and what are not, and they need to be repaired, along with some other things. The cost is estimated 120, I've seen 120,000, I've seen another 130,000 or whatever figure. Frankly, it seems like a lot of money for handrails, but in any event, if you put out bids, you know exactly what you're dealing with, and then you have to make that decision. I strongly urge to you that this tower is a goldmine for you, for, for the City of Largo. It really is. It's unique. For one thing, it's not owned by a university, so we can, the public can get in, it can dive. See, oh my, oh my gosh. Okay. A lot of benefits are from this guy. I myself have a diver. I've coached for 25 years at St. Pete Catholic High School, and I coach all kinds of high school kids as well. One of my divers that has worked out with Toni Periello there in Largo, she placed fifth at the AAU Nationals that just took place. And I send her up here every now and then to work on that tower. The, I got a lot to say, but I don't have time, so what I'm going to do is I just, okay, I'll get to this. I've talked to the foundation members. I cannot make a commitment at this time. But if you elect to do this, I have strong reason to believe that the foundations of diving will contribute up to 25%, well, will contribute 25% up to $30,000 to the City of Largo for the renovation of this tower. We strongly believe this tower is really, it's important to the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm done.
Next speaker. Next speaker is Franca Bentavegno. I'm so sorry if I said that wrong.
I'll start with my public comment, and then I'll see how far I can get with reading those of my family. My name is Franca Bentameya. I'm a City of Largo property owner. 26 years ago, what drew my family and I to the area were the impressive City of Largo Parks and recreational centers. My parents also purchased their winter retirement home here. My children have all swam and dove at this Southwest Recreation Center pool for all their life. My 14- and 17-year-olds are divers and have used the tower to either practice for tower diving competitions or to develop their skills required on the springboards. We have been on the WFLA dive team for six years, and my daughters are nationally ranked. All of the coaches have been very cautious and knowledgeable about the stating the rules and progressing the kids accordingly in order to prevent any injuries on the tower and on the springboards. Amongst the diving community, the City of Largo is known as a city with a tower. This weekend, we were in Coral Springs at a very big competition, and all they would say is, oh, that's the other tower in Florida. This is because there are only two, only two city towers in the whole state of Florida, the one in Largo and the one in Coral Springs. Unfortunately, my daughter Karina Lumia, who is a nationally ranked diver and is a national champion, can't be here this evening because for the last two weekends, she has been driving to Coral Springs, and we've done eight-hour trips in order for her to dive in Coral Springs and practice her tower. As divers, my children are required to be members of USA Diving and AAU, which provides each one of them with over $1 million of insurance. When we host events at our pool, the members and visitors who are diving at our pool are also required to have the same participation in USA Diving and AAU memberships, which gives them the same insurance protection and coverage. We believe that the City of Largo has a unique diving tower. If managed and advertised properly, the diving tower can be a very lucrative financial opportunity by providing a rental schedule and defined guidelines for neighboring dive teams, as well as for nationwide and worldwide teams. There is disparity based on tower usage statistics that have been provided. A diving tower on the west coast of Florida, seven minutes from the Gulf of Mexico, is a gem, and the envy of cities and divers across the country and the world. We understand that like any other building, it is a structure that has to be maintained. At this time, the City of Largo is missing out on a revenue generating opportunity that can self-support itself and its renovations for many years to come. This year alone, four divers, including my daughter, who is going to the University of Florida on a scholarship, have had the opportunity to dive at, at the Southwest Recreation Center. I'm asking you to please reconsider and reopen the tower for these children and all the divers in the future to come in state of Florida and in Largo. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Karina Lumia.
She's not here.
Oh, that's your daughter? Okay.
Can I read it for her?
That's up to the vice mayor.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, this would have been her statement, but she has a biology exam tomorrow.
Understood.
I am Karina Lumia, the daughter and granddaughter of Largo property owners. Some of my achievements include being a national tower champion and international diving medalist, as well as a three-time state diving champion and six-time All-American diver. In fall 2021, I will be attending the University of Florida and diving with a scholarship. I attribute much of my diving success to the City of Largo and the opportunity that it has provided me for the last six years at the Southwest Recreation Center. Having the privilege of training and competing tower just seven minutes away from my home has given me the ability to excel in both my academics and diving career. It has kept me focused, and it has allowed me time to contribute my skills back to my community through volunteerism. I ask you to please reconsider reopening the tower so that I and so many fellow divers will not have to continue driving eight hours each weekend to go, to go diving on the Coral Springs Tower. This puts a major financial and academic strain on myself, my family, my fellow divers, and coaches. I really hope that you reconsider opening the tower for myself and my fellow divers and all future divers. Please keep true to the initiative that it starts in parks, and keep providing a true unique tower opportunity in the City of Largo for all of its residents and visitors. Thank you for your time and the opportunity the City of Largo has provided me with.
I have one from her sister, who's also a diver.
Go ahead.
My name is Lorena Lumia, and I am a diver with WFLA Diving. My parents and grandparents are Largo property owners. I started diving in high school, and due to the opportunity that I have had to practice my skills on the tower, I have been able to develop my springboard skills more effectively. Last summer, I was able to participate at AAU Nationals and ranked second place on the one-meter springboard. The tower gives me the confidence to overcome fears and to advance in performing more difficult dives and progress in my diving abilities. I'm asking you to please reconsider opening the tower at the Southwest Rec Center to allow myself and my fellow divers to excel in the sport we love without having to drive eight hours to Coral Springs for the next available tower. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like my husband's? My husband's?
I think we, I think we understand, yeah, we appreciate it, though.
We have several emails that came in under publiccomment@largo.com. First is Raymond Gordon, and he writes, "Good evening. From a concerned 20th Street Southwest Largo resident, we have been residents for just under one year now, and we have concerns of the traffic traveling down our street at far above the posted speed limits constantly. My wife and I are concerned with the traffic that uses our residential road as a cut-through to either the park or Trotter Road. These people seem to have no regard for the law, including the posted speed limit of 15 miles per hour, due to a couple little deaf children in our neighborhood and a couple of dip signs on the road that do not deter any unlawful drivers from speeding through. My wife and I actually find it quite disrespectful and unnecessary, as well as dangerous, as I am sure several of our neighbors are as well. We have a two-year-old granddaughter that will soon be riding her bicycle around the neighborhood, supervised, of course. We propose a three-way stop sign at the intersection of 20th Street Southwest and 10th Avenue Southwest before one of these unlawful..." He's a WFLA diver from 2003 to 2013. He writes, "Growing up as a WFLA diver provided me with an opportunity to begin to develop habits at an early age that continue to benefit me in my young adult and professional life. There are few sports where different outcomes can be as clearly attributable to an athlete's diligence and consistency in training, as well as their ability to control their emotions and fear as platform diving. Far from a typical after-school sport, platform diving calls for a young athlete's undivided focus while at practice and thoughtfulness outside of practice through extra conditioning, strength training, stretching, and diet considerations on a daily basis. Training on the platform also provides young athletes with significant access to competitions that draw athletes from around the country and the world, and universities prioritize the recruitment of divers with platform training. Platform divers often attend the college of their choice, many times with scholarships. My own experience with the WFLA team and competition and platform events played a large role in my acceptance to the University of Pennsylvania's Wharton School, where I was a member of the men's swimming and diving team. After my acceptance, I had the benefits of an immediate group of friends, coaches, and advisors that come with participating in NCAA athletics. I am certain that these benefits supported my academic performance, ability to succeed in college, and provided additional professional opportunities for me after graduation. The decommissioning of the platform at Southwest would deny opportunities for Largo's youth to develop a lifelong skill set, compete at a national level, and gain an edge in an increasingly competitive college admissions process." The next email is from Lisa Rodetsky. "Hello, I have been living and working in beautiful Largo for over 30 years. My kids are divers at Southwest Pool and have been for a few years. I am asking to get the tower open again. It is such a shame to have such an amazing, unique amenity right here in our backyard just sitting untouched. There is only one other tower in the state that is accessible to club divers, my son and daughter being one of them. Divers used to come from all over to our pool. Now, a couple times a month, we have to drive four hours each way to Coral Springs to train. We are spending so much money on hotels and food in other cities. We want to stay here and bring others into our beautiful city to support our economy instead." Next email is from Brianna with no last name given. "Good evening. I am so lucky to be a Largo resident and have such a beautiful pool so close to home with such amazing diving amenities. I remember taking swim lessons when I was very little and watching all the divers go off the tower. I was so impressed. They did such beautiful dives. As I got older, I wished I could do that, too. I am 14 years old and have been diving competitively for over three years. Tower is my strongest event, and I love every minute of it. I can't explain how empowering and free it feels diving off of a tower. It gives me such confidence and self-esteem nailing a dive. Although I have never placed first, that is my goal and something I strive for. I am driven, very focused, and diving off of tower only reinforces that. My dream is to get a diving scholarship from UF. If it wasn't devastating enough to have the pool closed and I could not dive for a few months at the start of COVID, now I get the news that the tower is closed indefinitely. I was truly crushed. I loved diving tower and was getting so good. Now my goals have shifted to finding a tower to train on so I can compete again to achieve my dream. Unfortunately, it is not that easy. It's not like a tennis court or soccer field that are everywhere. The nearest and only one is four hours away. The drive is so exhausting, and I have better use of my time like doing homework. I beg you to please find a grant or a plan to get the tower that is so close to home and that I love so much to get functional again. Thank you for listening to my hopes and dreams." Next email is from Hannah Stein, and she writes, "To whom it may concern, as a nine-year member of WFLA Diving Team, my experiences at the Southwest Rec Pool were an integral part in shaping my foundation to adulthood. As a current medical student, diving inspired perseverance, repetition of skills, and most importantly, courage. The feeling of standing on the top of the 10-meter platform and looking over the pool and surrounding neighborhood is almost impossible to create. The confidence and trust you have to muster within yourself to take that first jump off the tower carries over to the confidence and trust you need to chase your future as a young adult. The tower platforms created athletes, phenomenal college students, and young adults who know how to face adrenaline and fear and make that jump toward their goals. Additionally, without even considering the characteristics these towers can create, it has to be noted the astronomical costs of even considering the breakdown, removal, and disposal of the structure. I can't believe the cost of repairs needed would be more than the removal and dumping of that large amount of concrete. I hope that the commission will see that these towers are a great addition to the Southwest Recreation Pool, as well as the future of WFLA divers." And I do have two more that came in. This one is from Franco Lumia. "A City of Largo property owner and father of two nationally ranked divers. My children dive with the WFLA Diving Team at the Southwest Recreation Center. The tower has been instrumental in their diving skills development and competition performance throughout the last six years. One of my daughters will be continuing her diving career in the fall of 2021 at the University of Florida. Due to the tower shutdown, we have started driving eight hours on weekends to use the only other available tower facility in the state of Florida, which is in Coral Springs. The city of Largo is doing a disservice to its residents, taxpayers, and community by shutting down the tower without any plans for maintenance. We understand that, like any other building, this tower has to be maintained. I'm asking you to please reconsider reopening the tower to continue to develop divers and possibly develop an economic plan of management and advertisement for use by other neighboring dive teams and teams nationwide so that the projected renovations can be self-sustained and this tower becomes an economic benefit to the Largo community. Thank you for your time and consideration to this matter." And I have one more. This is from Alex Tilbrook. "Hi, my name is Alex Tilbrook. I am writing in response to the council meeting today since I cannot attend in person related to the diving platform at Southwest Recreation Complex. I am currently the Talent Acquisition Manager at Raymond James Financial and Dove Club at the WFLA from 1999 through 2004 with Tony. I received an athletic scholarship for diving to Florida State University, where I competed from 2004 to 2008 before graduating. It was because I had the ability to train platform from 1999 to 2004 that I was able to receive an athletic scholarship from FSU. Platform diving is a college event that most Power Five Conference require you to compete if they are going to offer you an athletic scholarship. This is the only platform that exists on the St. Pete side of the bridge. You would be removing this opportunity from many other future athletes if the platform is not fixed. On top of this, diving platform really helped me mature as a teenager. I gained confidence in myself, trust in others, and was able to overcome my fears. This really helped me get myself through college and allowed me to truly progress in my professional career. I was a lot more reserved and kept to myself before gaining the confidence to trust myself and my coach when I started training platform. Please do what it takes to keep the platform up and running and allow our local divers to continue to have the same opportunities that I did." And I think that's all of them.
Okay. Thank you very much. For all of you that are here now, there obviously is going to be a discussion at the end of the meeting. So if you'd like to stay and listen to that, that'd be great, and no real, well, I think we're going to have a little bit of, we'll just have some discussion on here in a little bit. So please stay and listen if you'd like to, and we'll figure out which way we're going to be moving forward with that. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, nothing, seven zero, excuse me, seven, nothing. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on February 16, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Next up is the consent docket. Can we hear the consent docket, please?
Item five, authorization to renew School Resource Officer Agreement with the Pinellas County School Board for Largo High School and Largo Middle School for the 2020 through 2021 school year. Item six, award of scope and fee to McKimmon Creed Incorporated to provide flow monitoring in various sanitary sewer basins across the city, RFQ number 19-Q-666, in the amount of $186,235. Item seven, authorization to purchase recap heavy-duty tires and services from Callahan Tire Incorporated in the estimated amount of $165,000 in accordance with City of Venice bid number 3074-17 through February 27, 2022. Item eight, authorization to purchase replacement vehicles for the Department of Public Works' Solid Waste Division from Kenworth of South Florida Incorporated, Florida Kenworth Incorporated, and Peterson Industries in accordance with the Florida Sheriff's Association Contract number FSA 20-VEH18 and Sourcewell Contract number 041217-P11 in the estimated amount of $2,255,123. Item nine, approval of a use agreement between the City of Largo and Wade and Melissa Farmer for the property located at 14130 Victoria Road, parcel number 073015000000-130-0500. Item 10, appointment of Eddie Dickey as a member of the Community Development Advisory Board.
You guys, you've heard the consent docket. If you would like, I'd like a motion.
I move approval of the consent docket without commission discussion and including staff background provided in the commission packets.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Next up will be, or the second reading of ordinance number 2021-32.
Good evening, mayors and commissioners. This ordinance before you is for second reading, an amendment to the Comprehensive Development Code to establish applicable standards for development within the Largo Tri-City Special Area Plan. This was heard by the Planning Board on January 7, 2021, and recommended for approval, and then came to you for first reading on February 2, 2021, and approved. Since first reading, there was a minor change to Page Eight, Section Six, a typo, and staff recommends approval of the ordinance as amended. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Orderance number 2021-2, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Comprehensive Development Code to establish applicable standards for development within the Largo Tri-City Special Area by amending Section 5.2 Land Use Classifications, Section 7.1 Special Designations in General, Section 7.2 Special Designations in General, and Section 7.4 Corridors, Section 15.9 Drive-Thru Facilities, creating Section 15.20 Gas Stations within the Largo Tri-City Special Area Plan, and Section 15.21 Storage Facilities in the Tri-City Special Area Plan, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards on this.
And then who, Alan, is that you?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that because this has already been approved on first reading, and you're having to make the amendment to correct the Scrivenor's error, you'll have to take a motion to amend the ordinance.
And then a motion to approve.
And then adopt the ordinance as amended.
As amended. Okay.
Staff doesn't have the authority to amend the ordinance between first and second reading.
So we need a motion to approve the amendment, correct?
To amend the ordinance.
Amend the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. And then next, we would need a motion to approve as amended.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-32 as amended on second and final reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries seven, zero. Next up will be discussion on ordinance number 2021-33.
Good evening, mayors and commissioner. Tonight's case, the proposed amendment to the Comprehensive Development Code to adopt the Florida Building Code Seventh Edition and repeal the subsection related to the placement of mobile homes 48 inches above grade. The 2020 Florida Building Code replaces the 2017 Florida Building Code, which is referenced 12 times within the Comprehensive Development Code. The reason for the change to Section 11.17.6 is that the minimum requirement to achieve at least an eight rating on the CRS program, the city must adopt and enforce at least one foot of reboard for all structures, including mobile homes, and the code currently calls for 48 inches above grade. The current rating is a six, so without that change, it would automatically drop this to a nine. Speaking of building, the Florida Building Code changes, there's not really anything, any significant changes. It's mostly just to clarify the requirements from previous code that were causing problem, that were unclear. And I have any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2021-33, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Comprehensive Development Code by amending subsections 1.1, 4.4.5, 12.7, 15.37C, 16.2.4, 16.8.2, 18.1.1A, and 18.29B3 to adopt the Florida Building Code Seventh Edition, parentheses, 2020, and repealing subsection 11.17.6B, requiring that the bottom of the frame of mobile homes be 48 inches above grade, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Do we have any cards?
I have no cards.
That's crazy. I figured this would be just as popular as the diving boards. Take a motion if we have no comment.
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-33 on first reading and schedule a second reading in public hearing on April 6, 2021.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you. Next up is ordinance number 2021-38.
Good evening. The ordinance before you tonight addresses three items dealing with the stormwater utility rate. The first item is a proposal to change the ERU, which is the equivalent residential unit square footage, which is currently 2,257 feet. And based on a study conducted a couple years ago, the consultants recommended increasing that to 3,000 square feet per ERU. That will change the amount of impervious surface that's allocated to residential customers, and it will reduce the impervious surface allocated to commercial and other customers who are billed on actual impervious surface. The second item is a change in how we bill high-density customers. Currently, high-density customers, which includes multi-story apartment buildings, they're billed on a percentage of an ERU, 60% of one ERU. Again, based on a different study, the consultant looked at the actual impervious surface of the multifamily high-density customers and recommended charging them the same way we charge commercial and industrial customers currently, which is based on the actual ERU of impervious surface. The third proposal is to increase the utility rate in order to generate new revenue to pay additional cost of running the stormwater system. If all three of these items were adopted tonight as proposed in the ordinance, the ERU would increase $2.26 per month. So, single-family residents would see a $2.26 increase in their monthly bill, and of course, they have a bimonthly bill, so that would be $4.52 every bimonthly billing cycle. Any customer paying based on actual impervious surface would actually see a smaller increase in the rate, but all customers would see an increase in their stormwater utility rate. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2021-38, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending Chapter 23, Article 3, Stormwater Utility 23, Article 3, Stormwater Utility of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending the definition of equivalent residential unit, parentheses ERU, by increasing the square footage equal to one ERU, by amending the method of calculating the stormwater utility fees for high-density residential uses, and by increasing the rate charged for, per ERU for calculating stormwater utility fees, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this?
I have no cards. Let me see if there's nobody on Zoom, and let me just check him out. No, I have no public comment.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, I just, just a comment. For anybody watching this from a distance, to think that, you know, this comes before us and we haven't already talked about this, I will read from the commission memo that says, "After a lengthy, in-depth discussion at the work session." So, thank you for that, Ken. It's excellent, excellent work.
Would you like to make a motion? Anybody?
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-38 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on March 16th, 2021.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed, no.
Okay, so we have, the motion carries six one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we will have a staff report on the Southwest Rec diving tower.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I'm here tonight to discuss the platform dive tower at the Southwest Recreation and Aquatic Complex. The dive tower was built in 1984. In 2007, McCarthy and Associates did an evaluation of the dive tower and issued three recommendations. The memo stated that only the painting of the concrete was completed, but I mistakenly left out some spalling was also corrected in order for the painting to be completed. Also, additional railing was installed, but no structural modifications were completed to the dive tower. In 2012, 2013, Kimberly Horn completed a study to look at the modifications that could be made to the aquatic center, but the report did not discuss the dive tower. Subsequently, we have found a 2013 Weller pool report, who was a subcontractor for Kimberly Horn, which stated the rust is apparent to much of the perimeter of each platform. At that time, an unfunded project was put into the CIP. In 2019, there were some concerns about the tower raised by staff, so Panonian Associates did a structural evaluation. They recommend, recommended more spalling be addressed, there was crazing of the platforms. Crazing is the development of a network of fine, random cracks and fissures in the surface of the concrete, which caused shrinking of the surface layer. I didn't know what that was either, so we took care of that. And the damaged perimeter steel channels, which were also discussed in the McCarthy and Weller reports. The dive tower was closed in early March due to damage, which also coincided with pools closing due to COVID-19. Tower was not reopened with the pool, as staff has concerns for the safety of the towers. Currently, the current roster from the diving coach has six divers, three of which are current residents. Today, city staff is looking for a decision on how to move forward. We have not yet got solid pricing, but an initial verbal estimate would be starting at $135,000. Joan Byrne and Ally Beal from RPA are here, along with Jimmy Nunjester from our Construction Division of Facility Maintenance and Public Works, to answer any questions.
Questions for, to discuss the report? Commissioner Gerard?
I have a few questions, and let me just start by asking, is the tower safe to use in its current condition?
I'm not a structural engineer. Jimmy Nunjester has spoken to our structural engineer, and maybe he can provide some comments on what the engineer stated as part of his results of his findings.
How's everyone doing? I spoke to the structural engineer, and he mentioned that although he can't give anything, you know, to specify without legal binding, but he did mention he wouldn't let his kids go off the platform.
All right, close enough. I don't suppose he lets somebody else's kids go off the platform either, right?
Right.
Okay.
He mentioned that the, the steel perimeter on the sides, on the corners is the, is the main issue. That's where the railing is connected into the steel. It's stainless steel is the railing, and the steel is the perimeter, so it's corroding.
There was a question about the welds at those points, I believe, and there was a question that I saw about it being unsafe. It could cause cuts to the, it could cut the diver's foots, feet.
Yes.
Feet, excuse me.
Both their foots.
The, the steel around the platform can, we do have numerous photos of, that you can see the rust.
I saw them.
Coming out of the top of it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
How many meets per year on average were we having before, where the tower was being used before, before it was closed?
Like the, had Ally Beal or Bell or Joan?
Ally or Joan, I see Joan Byrne there.
Joan or Ally, one of you would like to?
Can you repeat the question? I'm having a hard time hearing.
How many meets, you know, were, were we having per year, on average, you know, over several year period, I'm sure you would know, where the tower was being used?
How many weeks?
Meets.
Oh.
Meets.
How many meets?
Competitions, how many competitions?
How many meets per year?
Yeah.
Not very many that use the tower. Now, the tower gets used as they're like warming up and that, but where there's actual, last time we had tower commission, tower competition was in 2014, when we, because to have tower competition requires scaffolding and the, for the judges to be kind of level with the surface of the water. So that was the last time we had tower competition.
Okay, well, we're just, we're, we're going to have a conversation here, so we, just please keep it quiet, and then, you know, we will have a conversation. If you guys have any, any comments about what is being said up here, or how we're having our conversation, feel free to email us, or catch us outside when we're leaving, we'll be glad to talk about it. But, you know, right now, it's this conversation between, between the staff and us, so we can get as much information as possible from the staff. Now, again, you guys are more than feel, more than available afterwards to let us know what your thoughts are on the comments.
We have, we have several, we have had several meets. I believe we've had three overall meets since 2014, but 2014 was the last time that, that there was competition using the, the tower.
And of course, I heard a number of comments tonight where divers were using it for training. So, was the tower being used on a regular base for training, for diver training, or were divers coming in from other markets as well?
If the divers were coming in from other markets to use our facility, we were not made aware of it, they were not charged, they are not members of, of our team. So, if that has, has happened, it has not been with our blessing and full knowledge that others are coming to, to train here who are not registered members of our team.
Well, we have Largo divers who were using.
This month, we have, we get a monthly report from the dive team, and there were 12 divers on the roster. And when we spoke with the coach of that dozen people, there were five, I believe that was the correct number that he used, to, that regularly use the tower as tower divers. Now, as you heard from one of the parents, they typically, many of the divers will use the tower for practice, to, to practice their entry. But, let's face it, probably 95% of the pools in this country don't have a dive platform. What they'll do sometimes is to adjust the springboard, so it's less springy to have the, the same effect of having a, a stable platform. I'm not an expert diver myself, so I don't understand all the physics of it, but that certainly made sense to me.
What, what, what have we done to, to examine, to research, you know, marketing this very unique platform to get more use, bring in more teams, have more competitions, raise more revenue for its maintenance?
You know, you heard a number of years ago when we were talking about the Southwest Pool, and there were many, many promises made by the swim team at that time about how we were going to produce, they were going to produce revenue and bring in. One of the ways that we bring, that the team brings in revenue, which really only covers the cost of heating and cooling the pool, is through college rentals. Those are usually over the, over the holiday season at that time of year, and we have a number, of course, we haven't been able to do that this year, but that simply pays for the heating and cooling, which is something that's required. Our, our pool itself is, is obviously well set up for competition. The facility as a whole, we couldn't, our neighbors, you would hear more complaints from residents of Largo if we had huge competitions all the time, and very honestly, we don't get inquiries like that. We don't, we've worked with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and, you know, I've had numerous meetings myself, as well as our aquatics manager, about how they want to bring teams in, and, and that's going to bring revenue, but it has yet to materialize into hard numbers. At, at best, Southwest Pool as a whole, in its best years, has recouped about 30% of its expense. That's swimming, diving, synchronized swimming, everything that we do there. So in terms of cost recovery, a competition pool, I don't know of a competition pool anywhere that really is, is self-sustaining. I, there may be some. I'm not aware of any of them, and my colleagues that I know in, within Florida don't indicate that.
So you're saying that, as it stands right now, if the tower was open, or by, by past experience, that you were maximizing, the city was maximizing the utilization of the platform?
I don't, I'm, I'm not aware that we have ever turned away any business or anybody who wanted to use that pool, promote it as a thing, as a, a competition pool. And again, we always have to balance it with all the other things that happen at Southwest and happen in, in that neighborhood, and we certainly have inadequate parking there to do that on a regular basis, and, and really market the heck out of it so that we could bring in all these competitions. We just really are not well set up for that. I think you're all aware of all the complaints you get about parking when we have a regular swim meet just a couple of times a year, so.
One, one last question. Thanks for your indulgence, and it may not be for you, it may. So, rough estimate, $130,000 to $200,000 to repair it. Any estimates offered on what demo and disposal might be?
No, we do not have a number on demo and disposal.
All right, thanks for, thank you for your indulgence, thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, my, my questions are a little more boring. Any idea, Matt, would it cost to construct that tower back in the day?
I do not know the, the original cost.
Just curious, and I guess I asked that question with, with an eye toward a city asset and the cost of maintenance on it. You know, I'm not sure what it costs, and as Commissioner Gerard was inquiring at what it would cost to take it down. I, I'm a veteran of some of the things that Joan has talked about when we had large swim meets down there at Southwest Rec, and, and I'm aware of the previous conversations and thoughts of bringing in revenue from other sources. A gentleman tonight suggested that he might be able to provide some of those funding. If, if the, the city were inclined to fund this repair and make the tower safe, which of course is the first priority for all of us, where would that money come from? Just general fund or rec?
It would come from the general fund.
And, so I guess, I guess my question is if we have something and we spend some money to maintain it, that's not unusual in any department and any service that we provide, but I think we just have to decide how, how we get the most for our money and, and provide services to, to benefit the most, more residents of the city, I guess. I don't know. I mean, again, I've been here before, I remember the previous discussions at an open mic night at the library, same kind of, same kind of comments being made.
Okay. Any other?
Not really a que, a question beyond how we're going to pay for it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Brown, did you, you have your hand up?
I do, I'm digitally. I found where that button was. I had, I had a couple of questions first, and Commissioner Carroll kind of touched on this a little bit, but I'm curious what our annual maintenance budget has been over the 36 years of the lifetime of this tower to date. What do we generally spend on annual maintenance that's basically for the tower?
While we have spent money, you know, painting and doing repairs, and it would be hard for me to tell you an exact figure, I think the, the, the key is how much we spend because we have to maintain 18 feet of water in order to do that tower, and that, that is the huge expense and the only reason that we have the depth that we have at, at Southwest. We've, when we've painted the, you know, we spent $6,500 in, in 2007 when we had an engineering study. We spent another $5,000 when we had the last, I believe it was a $5,000, give or take. We're talking about $100,000, I guess it doesn't matter if it was five or six last year to have the engineering study done. We, when we've had it repainted, I believe we spent about $15,000. We've had it painted several times, and I don't, I can't give you a number other than the, the main, you know, repairs for all of the pool, because it, it's a part of that, it's part of the decking, all of the stuff that, that goes into that.
Okay, thank you. When, when the pool facility, I know that this year is different because of COVID, but when the pool facility is used for college teams that come down, are they solely swim teams, or do they sometimes use the diving facilities, including the tower?
Typically, they're mainly swim teams, some of them also have divers that primarily use the springboards. We have had, I believe, two teams, was that Ally? Two teams that have actually used for some of their participants the, the tower to, to train.
Okay, and, and I was going to ask what the cost of installing a dive tower like this would be, but we don't necessarily have that number. I would like to point out that, that, you know, a, a, a city that's pretty close to us has a pretty big event. I, I think it was, the Pelican Golf Course has the LPGA. They've got much less parking than we do at Southwest, so I think that it is possible to manage something like a premier event. One of the speakers mentioned that there was a USA qualifier or something in the past. I, I, I am kind of leaning on the side of, we either, we either have to continue to invest in this and make it an attraction. You know, we heard from half a dozen people that are driving across the state to go, to go use a tower. I would think that there's other divers rather, other than people that are, like Southwest is their home pool in this region, that, that would potentially come and, and pay. I'm curious to find out. I know, Ms. Byrne, you probably don't have the answer to this, but I'm curious to find out how Cape Coral manages when our divers go over there to use the platform, how that's, how that's charged, or, you know, that type of, how that functionality works. I think that, you know, obviously, the deeper water is, is a higher maintenance cost, but the tower, from what I've heard, has costs as, you know, maybe $50,000. tower, from what I've heard, has cost us, you know, maybe $50,000 to maintain for 36 years. At least, at least that's what I hear. So I don't think it's that surprising that we have to invest some money to get it back up to usable. That's the only question I had, comment, I guess, any question that I had. But thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Hulk?
Yes, I just, actually, a lot of the mayor's comments were pretty on target for how I was feeling. Is there any way that we can promote, not so much events, but to bring other teams in for training, to help with the revenue? Have we ever done anything like that, reached out to swim teams and to bring more in?
We leave it up to the, because these are individual teams that are, you know, 501(c)(3) organizations. We leave the promotion of the membership of their team up to them, and what we have done is to work with Convention and Visitors Bureau and had many discussions with them about, because they too recognize that this is the only facility like this in this area, but to date, not much has actually come of that. And they'd be the ones in terms, especially in terms of national kinds of meets and international sorts of things. And yes, we certainly, I agree with the mayor, we're not precluded from doing those kind of events. If we did it to the extent that we would have to do it to make it self-supporting, I think we would have a huge issue with the neighbors, and, because even with the several swim meets where we get about 700 swimmers at those, we usually, and you usually probably get some emails from neighbors who are not happy with the parking and traffic. So, can we do it? Absolutely. Should we? Can we? That's a decision that you all can make for us.
It's kind of hard when you think about, I mean, it's already there, and the demolition could cost as much. The pool is already 18 feet deep, so that, I know you said that there was extra cost in maintaining that, but it's not like we're going to, we can fill the pool in either. That's an additional cost, so it's basically balancing, it's an existing project that's already there, and it is being utilized, so, you know, if we're talking just dollar amounts, I think it's going to be the same whether we keep it or we don't keep it. So that's my, just my take so far. We haven't gotten any real numbers yet, though.
Commissioner Gerard?
Thank you. I was asking about the cost of demolition because it'd been brought up that it would cost as much to tear it down as it would cost to repair it. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I was just wondering about that. If we have a tower that's 34, 35 years old, if I'm doing my math correctly, and I might not be.
Don't look at me now.
Close to 30 years old. That's okay, because I said "foot" earlier instead of "feet," so that's, this is my good day. And the total maintenance that we've done is painted and put a cage around, and put a spiral staircase up to the first platform for, you know, such a piece of construction and such a unique piece of equipment. You know, it's surprising to me that we haven't done more. We had a report in 2007 that this needed some work, and the result was that we painted it, and we didn't, we didn't correct what needed correcting back then, so now it's incumbent on us to do one thing or another. I do know that the future of the pool is also under examination. I don't know exactly if there's a timeline as to when we might make any changes to that, but if we have something like this, and it is being useful, especially to young people, you know, I was not a great fan of going through the expense of repairing it when I first heard about it, but, you know, given consideration, and especially because we might have, you know, this association pitching in up to $30,000, I would certainly like to see exactly what the cost was and get something much more concrete as to what it would take to get this done, and maybe move forward on it so people can get back to using it. And it's surprising to me, very surprising to me, that we have such a unique piece of equipment in that pool and in that platform that we can't get more use out of it. I wouldn't expect it to pay for itself, but I would expect for it to get used more. You know, we have a lot of parks and recreation facilities that don't, you know, pay for themselves. This is not an enterprise fund, and if we can get more support and bring in more people for more meets, the whole town, the whole city benefits from this. And I'd like to see some serious examination about what we can do to get more utilization out of it, at least for as long as we have this pool. So thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say real quick, before I call on you, Commissioner Carroll, is that I agree. Actually, I was just going to, you know, state that I have a lot of conversations with the city manager, and when we, you know, talk about parks a lot, it, I don't, my personal belief is that, you know, parks and recreation isn't necessarily an enterprise fund. It's not for profit, you know. We are providing a service, the city is providing a service, to our residents and the people who live and use our facilities. So some of them live, a lot of them live in Largo, some of them don't, but if we have a unique facility, that there's, we're one of two in the entire state, it would seem that, you know, you're obviously are going to get people from outside of the city of Largo. Some of them are, you know, as far as how that's paid for, if it's, if, you know, I know the dive team's paying a fee when they're using our facilities. If there's somebody from outside of the dive team coming in and using their facilities, I don't know how that works. Maybe we could look into that a little bit more, but, you know, I don't believe that we need to necessarily make a profit on everything we do, particularly when it comes to parks and records, because I am a firm believer, again, that it's more of a service that we provide. So, and I think Commissioner Hulk made a very good point when we talk about heating the pool. The pool's 18-foot deep whether there's a tower next to it or not, so we're going to continue to pay to heat that pool all the, every year, until, you know, we get to the point where we decide, you know, if or we are going to change that facility or whatever that looks like, and that's, you know, an unfunded CIP project that could be, well, at least more, probably more than five years out. So, just wanted to kind of throw that out there. I agree with the mayor. I think that it's a, it's a good idea to, you know, we should take a look at how much it's going to cost, get a firm number on what it's going to cost us to fix this. It's obviously used. We had half a dozen, there was three or four people from one family who had, you know, that talked about using the facility, and, you know, we have several people in here tonight, it's most people we've had in here in a year. But, in, you know, multiple emails, so, you know, we talked, I wanted to make one other point, there's always a conversation about, you know, there's a limited amount of people on the dive team, that's every year. So you say, we say that there's 12 people or whatever it is on the dive team this year, well, there's 12 people next year, and there's 12 people next year, and we had folks, you know, who are going to college this year, their siblings are going to be diving on the team next year if they're not already diving, and so we, you know, it's a continuation. We've had people diving on that platform for, man, 30 years?
36 years.
Yeah, so for a long time.
Do the math.
We don't need, we don't need to have to count on our foots to get it, but, in all seriousness, no, I think it's, I think it's a good facility, it's a service, again, that we provide for the city and our surrounding communities. So I think it's something that we should, while it's going to be there, we know that we're going to have that facility, and it's going to be in the format that it's in right now, I think it's a worthwhile project to go ahead and fund it and at least get that repaired and usable. So, Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, I was going to say much of what you just said there, Vice Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome.
But let me just say this, it's, if we have an asset, a city asset, we have to maintain it. If something happened to this building, even though we have aspirations of moving, if the roof started leaking, we'd have to fix it, right? Having said that, to the people in the audience who were very, very articulate and the ones at home that contacted us and expressed their views on this, we also have an obligation to be good stewards of tax money. And in my mind, what I'd like to see is close the gap between this, you know, 135,000 to 200,000 and get a hard number for that. I would like to hold some folks in the audience to their commitment to try to get some money and bring it to the table and see how that pans out. And I'd also like to know the cost associated with a demolition project on that, because I'd like to know what the difference is in the two decisions. But having been here, in Joan's defense, I've heard this song before about marketing and bringing events, and I have to agree, it's never going to pay for itself, ever. We just have to decide if it's an asset that we want to maintain, and this money comes from somewhere. It comes from the taxpayer, and it's, you know, it's a maintenance issue, but I don't want to, I don't want to sit here and think that Joan's going to go out and print a bunch of brochures or market this thing, and suddenly it's going to be a moneymaker, because that's not true. So I guess, sitting at this end of the day, I'm kind of hearing a consensus to get some numbers and, but what I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, is mostly in favor of maintaining.
I would agree. I think, yeah, it's that we definitely need to maintain our assets. Commissioner Smith?
I kind of hit what I was going to say. I'd like to see hard numbers of both sides. I think you can't walk into this without kind of getting an idea of where we're, what we're talking about to a point. And to, you know, the advertisement part, maybe starting like a campaign-wise of trying to get the diver, have we gotten the word out to the diving groups that this was, for one, I'm assuming that they showed up, so I'm assuming the word got out, but have we marketed out to say, we'd like to try to save this, and this is, you know, possible cost, and, you know, they just saved in Dunedin, was it Dunedin, Dunedin, an entire park? I view this, if there's two of them in the entire state, I see this as a goldmine. If we can market it properly, and it truly is there, but I think, I feel I'd like to see both numbers before we kind of make a decision shutting something completely down. How hard will that, how long would that take, are you looking at, if we move, the consensus up there is that we'd like to see some numbers?
Okay, so we would be able to reach back out to the engineer that did this study for us, and he said that he could provide us some additional numbers. The estimate for time-wise, I mean, obviously, we could get on the ball pretty quick with getting him to get those numbers to us. The engineering portion of this was about $14,000. That's kind of, you know, the kickoff part of it. The difference between the 120 to fix it and, you know, the 185,000 or so to fix it, is all going to depend upon how bad the steel infrastructure is once they start ripping the concrete up to fix that steel infrastructure, so it's.
We really don't know what's in it.
So, yeah, so we're not going to really, I mean, we can't, we can't come to you and say the cost of this project is going to be $135,000, because we're not going to know the full, the full depth, the full depth of it, until we take that concrete, get that concrete off, get that steel bar exposed to that support system. So that's, that's going to be the toughest part of getting a solid number. That's why we gave you a pretty, a pretty estimated range.
But it would come, it would have to come back to the commission at that rate, at that rate, excuse me, to be approved for, you know, at least the scope of the project, so I'm, at some point, this is going to come back to us to be approved to, before we would move forward with this project, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I would think we would have to work with the engineering firm, not just to develop the scope of work, but, and I'm, we'd have to talk to the engineer, but maybe we'd have to take things apart a little bit if we can, to see if we can get a better idea of any hidden conditions that we're not aware of right now, and if we did that, that might be able to get us a better handle on what the cost would be, what the extent of the work would be.
That's what I was thinking, is, I mean, if you're, if we're going to tear it down, either way, if it's going to be repaired or torn down, part of it's going to have to be removed in order to see the inside, so if they have to pull off one side of the concrete to see the inside and then go from there to get prices on fixing it, and then if we're not going to go with that route, then it's not going to be put back together anyway, so, either way.
Mayor, did you have another question, comment?
You're muted.
I did, thank you. First of all, it'll be 37 years this year, so I did the math here at home. I've got some paper. Secondly, I'm curious, we talked about the depth of the water there, and it's clear that more people use the springboards than they do the platform dive. What's the depth required for a springboard?
12 feet.
12 feet, okay. So we're talking about six feet by whatever the size of that well is, additional water that we're heating and cooling.
Yeah.
So it's not like that entire well would go away if we keep springboard diving boards.
Correct.
And lastly, you know, this is, I think that this commission and our city frequently looks for things that set us apart from our neighbors and make us different and better and need and the community of choice, and I think this is something that, through no fault of ours, it sets us apart from any other city on the west coast of Florida. And I think that, you know, considering that we've done extremely little maintenance, we've painted it several times, but extremely little maintenance in 30, almost 37 years, it seems like this is just the cost of deferred maintenance to me. And I think that we really need to look, take a look at the numbers, but strongly consider keeping it and doing what we can to attract visitors, and I don't mean necessarily huge meets, but if teams from other parts of Florida come and practice for a weekend, they're going to stay in a hotel, not be in Largo, but it could be. We have more hotels now than we did five years ago, so, and they're going to eat in our restaurants, and they're going to support our community and come here, not, not just because of probably, not, you know, people come to this part of the Pinellas County for beautiful beaches and all that stuff, and I like to have an asset here in Largo that folks will want to come visit too, so I'd like to see some hard numbers.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions, comments?
So I, Matt, I believe the direction is to get some firm idea of what we're, what the, what the maintenance, I guess, or rehab of the dive tower would cost, and bring that back to us so we can see if that's the direction we want to move forward with.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's see, items from the city attorney, Alan?
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner Hulk?
Just one quick thing, I just wanted to congratulate our awesome fire department again on another ISO rating of one. So all you citizens, make sure that you let your insurance companies know that you live in a city that has a fire department with ISO rating of one, which is excellent, and will actually lower your homeowner's policy a little bit. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll?
Other than congratulations to Major Starling on her recognition this evening, and thank you very much for everyone who spoke tonight, I know you feel strongly about this, and we really appreciate your input, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Smith?
And the only thing I have is, Mr. City Manager, could we keep the families and those who made comments there in the loop of where this project is, so when it comes here or where, I'd like them to know, you know, we love, Vice Mayor Robinson loves crowds, so we love seeing more people, so, the more we can get that, and if possibly, let the media know, because, like I say, if we could start some kind of campaign to, you know, figure out different ways of, to keep this out in the world out there, or even like Visit St. Pete, Florida or something, or wherever that one's called, Visit Clearwater St. Pete or something like that, maybe there's something there that they're, that we're not looking at or they can see that is different, so. So I, I'd like to see that also.
Certainly.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Finger?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard?
Thanks very much. I, I want to thank everybody who came out too and spoke. Believe it or not, when you come here and talk to us, we really do pay attention. And, and I, your effort and, and your dedication is really inspiring, really is. We have to keep in mind, of course, that this pool, you know, the whole question of what to do with the pool, the Southwest pool, is something that's on our minds. And I want to say that if we're going to talk about fixing the tower, you might want to talk about giving a fresh coat of paint to that locker room, too. It might not be a bad idea, and I don't know what they would fund, but maybe even go into the TDC and asking them if they've got something that they could help, willing to build a ballpark, you know, maybe they could help with, with a dive tower. And I do want to congratulate Recreation Parks and Arts on the, on the new playground over at Highland. I think Vice Mayor mentioned it already, but it's really an exceptional and a very, one more very unique thing that we have in Largo. There might be four like it in the entire country right now, and kids just love it.
Grownups, too.
Yeah. Commissioner Smith, Vice Mayor and I did go down the sliding board, and, and it was wonderful. So, and a great thing for Play Unplugged Month. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mayor Brown?
You're muted.
Thank you. I, I wanted to also congratulate Major Starling for her recognition and thank her for everything that she does for our city. She represents us very well in many, many capacities. I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Robinson for filling in for me today. I know it would have been very challenging to, to run an in-person meeting, not in person, so thank you for filling in for me. As you, as you probably know, I, I think you heard a little bit about, I've got a positive COVID case here at home, so I will be, I will be visiting you from here for the next 14 days and hopefully not longer. So everybody's doing okay, but, but, but we've got to, we've got to kind of lay low and stay home for the next couple of weeks and, and hopefully, hopefully it doesn't get any worse than it currently is. But thank you for everybody.
I just wanted to say for the Women's History Month proclamation to, to Major Starling, as, as a father of two daughters, she is somebody that I, I hope my daughters look up to and aspire to be, because she is, she's, she's, you know, has, has done a fantastic job for Largo Police Department and the city of Largo. And I, you know, I'm, I'm happy that she's a friend of mine, and I'm happy that she can represent so well and, you know, for this, for this Women's Month. To the folks who, who came to the meeting and actually stuck around for the entire thing, thank you very much. Did you guys drive, are you guys living in Pasco County? Do you go to 5A?
Um, I go to 5A.
Oh, okay. That's for the Razi, all right. But, um, so I just want to say thank you guys very much. Again, I think Commissioner Gerard said it, we actually do pay attention and listen when you guys call us and, and email us and, and come to the meetings. We, we definitely appreciate you taking the time out of your, everybody's busy, very, very busy schedule. So thank you for that. And that's, I believe, all I have for this evening. Mr. Schubert?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, then this meeting, oh, excuse me, is there any action items?
The one I had was a request by Commissioner Smith that tonight's speakers and the media be kept in the loop on the status of the dive tower issue.
Okay. If there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned.